Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Very pleased to welcome you to this sunny webinar on the Finch decision in the Supreme Court. My name's Estelle Honking's counsel. I'm absolutely delighted to be joined in this London Climate Week event by my colleagues in chambers who were involved in the Finch case. Harriet Townsend, Ruchi Parry, Nina Pindham and Alex Williams. And between us, we're going to be spending about 50 minutes giving our an overview of the Finch case and our takes on various elements of it, leaving 10 minutes of time for Q and A. As ever, please put any questions in the Q and A function rather than the chat function to avoid the chat function because that won't be monitored. And then we'll hopefully be able to to deal with the Q and A at the end. I'll be keeping my eye on it as we go through. I should also give a quick shout out to the missing cornerstone barristers member who hasn't been able to join us. That's David Welsh, who represented one of the interveners. He's also involved in the Rosebank Challenge, as are a couple of others in chambers. So shout out to you, David. We miss you. As I said, the way that we're going to run this webinar is essentially as a discussion between all of us. So I'm going to go to various people and ask particular questions. And hopefully, at the end of this, you will have a good understanding of what the judgment was about, what the sort of interesting legal elements are, and we'll end with a few particular takeaways from each of us. There are no slides that will be provided during this webinar. It's just a chat between the five of us. But we will, over the course of the coming weeks and months, be putting out quite a lot of materials in relation to the Finch decision, many through Cornerstone Climate. So watch out for that and we'll make sure that we bring those to your attention. As many of you will know, the Finch litigation concerned a 2019 decision by Surrey County Council to grant planning permission for commercial production of an estimated 3.3 million tonnes of oil over 20 years. That decision was challenged on a number of bases, one being that although the environmental statement explicitly said that it assessed and took into and gave information in relation to the direct emissions that would be caused from the site in relation to greenhouse gas emissions and its impact on the climate chain on climate change. It was explicit that it did not take into account the indirect greenhouse gas emissions. And that was challenged as unlawful under the Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations on the basis that as a matter of law, the downstream greenhouse gas emissions, i.e. the emissions from the burning, the eventual burning of the oil, were indirect effects of the commercial production of that oil. The application was refused permission on the papers and on renewal. It was granted permission by the Court of Appeal and then went to a full hearing before the High Court. And Mr. Justice Holgate dismissed the challenge on the basis that the true legal test is that downstream emissions are not legally capable of being indirect effects. That then went to the Court of Appeal, which upheld the judge's decision but on a different basis. And in fact, all three of the Court of Appeal judges, the senior president, Lord Justice Lewison and Lord Justice Moylan, found that downstream emissions were capable of being indirect effects, but that it was a matter of evaluative judgment for the planning decision maker, depending on the circumstances of each case. The matter then went to the Supreme Court. And while Friends of the Earth had intervened all the way through at the Supreme Court stage, there were also interventions by Greenpeace, by WCM, another developer for coal mining in Cumbria, and the first intervention by the Office for Environmental Protection. So with that very short introduction, I'm going to hand over first to Alex Williams, who's going to give us a basic exposition of what was decided by the majority, by the minority, so that we have a feel for the decision before we go into some more detailed discussions. So over to you, Alex.
Thanks, Estelle. And I've made sure to unmute this time because often that doesn't happen. There will be no muting errors today, hopefully. So as Estelle mentioned, we're going to do a slightly deeper dive now into what the majority and the minority decided. For anyone who's read the judgment, it is lengthy, but both majority and minority judgments are lengthy. So what I've tried to do in each case is to condense them into a number of what I regard as key findings, which I'll then talk you through. So starting with the majority, first of all, the judgment was given by Lord Leggett, and Lord Kitchen and Lady Rose agreed with him. The majority's finding was that it was necessary for the EIA, in this case, to assess the greenhouse gas impacts of burning the crude oil once refined. And to the majority, these impacts were, and this word is used plainly, an effect of the project. And there were, I think, seven key findings in this majority judgment. Key finding one, a bit of basic constitutional law. It is, of course, the court's role to interpret the law in its proper context. Now, in this case, that context included key principles underlying the EIA regime and also related international law obligations under, for instance, the ARHUS Convention. And those key principles, some of which Nina will discuss in a little bit more detail later, were that impact or, sorry, information as to the impact of a project on the climate should be made available to the public. Secondly, that the public should be able to participate in the decision-making process with that information in hand. And thirdly, the reminder that EIA obligations are procedural and not substantive. They're about taking into account certain matters, not necessarily about producing a particular outcome. Key finding two, this question of the effects, whether something is an effect of the project, is a question of law and a question of causation. The Court of Appeal's approach, which, as Estelle mentioned, saw it not as a question of law, but as a question of judgment for the decision maker, allows, the majority felt, and indeed, as we'll see, so did the minority, for too much uncertainty and inconsistency. It shouldn't be the case that different decision makers could make different decisions on the basis of the same facts on an issue like this. Key finding three, assessing whether effects are likely does involve judgment by the decision maker. But in this case, it was felt by the majority that it wasn't necessary to go any further in defining the notion of likelihood. Because in this case, the greenhouse gas emissions were inevitable if indeed, as it had been found in the High Court and as it was an agreed fact, it is inevitable that the oil will be burned. Key finding four, the environmental statement and the council's acceptance of it was flawed because it only assessed the direct or the scope one greenhouse gas impacts of the project. And in that regard, there are three particularly important points. The first is, it's irrelevant that the combustion of the oil depends on the intermediate process of refining it. The second is that it's irrelevant that the developer can't control the combustion emissions offsite. And thirdly, it's not enough to assume that other legal regimes will control those emissions downstream. So that's not a factor of significant weight when interpreting the EIA regulations. Key finding five, in the High Court, Mr. Justice Holgate was wrong to say that in this case, the downstream effects were incapable of being effects of the project. The intermediate process of refining the oil doesn't break the chain of causation between extraction of the oil and the greenhouse gas emissions that arise from burning it. And assessing the downstream greenhouse gas emissions in this case does not necessarily mean that they would also need assessing in applications for permission in other contexts. So for instance, applications for permission to extract metals or to construct factories for the making of aircraft components. And those were concerns that Mr. Justice Holgate raised in his judgment at first instance. And in Lord Leggett's opinion, those are different cases because the link to downstream emissions in those cases was not as was not as strong as in this case. Key finding six, the information on downstream greenhouse gas emissions isn't useless to decision makers. They can attach weight to the global warming impacts of a development when deciding whether to grant permission. And key finding seven of seven, the domestic and EU case law doesn't directly address the question that the Supreme Court had to grapple with. And this is particularly so of the Abraham and Wolonia case. In that case, the Court of Justice, European Court of Justice, talked about the need to assess the use of the end product. In this case, the end product or the equivalent of the end product, Lord Leggett said, was the functioning well site. And that was to be the equivalent of the reconfigured airports in Abraham and Wolonia. Lord Leggett felt that Abraham didn't assist on this particular question of whether burning oil extracted from the ground on this well site was or was not an effect of the project. But Lord Leggett did find that Squire and Shropshire, which dealt with emissions caused by spreading manure as a byproduct of a broiler chicken development on neighbouring land, did provide some indirect assistance to the majority's position and to the appellant's arguments. Lord Leggett said that was a case that did involve a form of downstream impacts. And so there was some some support to draw from that case. So those are the seven key findings, or at least as I see them, of the majority. What about the minority? Well, the judgment was given by Lord Sales and Lord Richards agreed with him. And their position was equally clear, but in the opposite direction. In this case, they believe that the question gave only one plausible answer, which said these effects are legally incapable of being effects of the project. And there were six key findings here. Key finding one, Lord Sale said that the purpose of the EIA regime is to identify and possibly to mitigate the environmental impacts of the project. The task of addressing scope three emissions, Lord Sales felt, was for national governments, having regards to legislation and relevant policy. And he described it as constitutionally inappropriate for planning authorities to make planning decisions based on their own views about the significance of scope three emissions. And possibly that would put them into conflict with central government decision-making and central government policymaking. He also suggested that it is difficult to see what a planning authority could do with this downstream emissions information other than to refuse consent, having considered it. That, he felt, could involve supplanting central government's role when such decisions are made. Key finding two, the text of the EIA directive with that purpose and context in mind wasn't clear enough, Lord Sales felt, to demand that downstream greenhouse gas emissions be assessed in this case. Key finding three, in agreement with the majority, EU and domestic cases don't really help because this particular question hasn't yet arisen. The minority felt that that included the Squire case. The emissions in that case were said by Lord Sales to be closely connected to the project in a way that they weren't in this particular case. Key finding four, in the course of appeal, Lord Justice Moylan was wrong when dissenting to attach the weight that he did to the notion that this project was for the extraction of oil for a commercial purpose. In relying on those words, commercial purpose, he also relied on text in the EIA Directive, Annex 1.14. And Lord Sales took the view that he was drawing, Lord Justice Moylan was drawing, too much from those words when relying on them. Key finding five, the majority in the Court of Appeal were also wrong to say that the question was one of judgment for the planning authority, this question of whether something is an effect of the project. So the majority, minority and Finch are in agreements on that point at least. And key finding six, Mr. Justice Holgate was right to say in the High Court that these effects were incapable of being effects of the project. There was only one lawful, or to put it a slightly different way, rational answer to this question. And in the minority's view, that answer was that these impacts fell or these effects fell out with the EIA or the scope of the EIA. And so with that whistle-stop tour of both judgments, over to Nina.
Super. Thank you very much, Alex. Yes. So now we're going to give a little bit more detailed analysis. And yeah, Nina, you first, please.
Thank you. No muting error from my end. Normally it's me who does it. So that's, we're off to a very good start. I'm going to give a slightly more detailed analysis of the EIA implications, which I got the lucky straw. They have nothing's really changed. That's because, of course, EIA is a process, as Alex said, it is outcome agnostic. So a consenting authority is perfectly entitled to approve a project, even where there are very significant environmental effects. One thing I want to bring out that I, for clarity, is that people shouldn't get carried away and think that because scope three emissions are, as those of us who know what they what they mean in most cases, they are generally by far the largest component of greenhouse gas emissions from any process. Because those will be environmentally significant in most cases. That does not automatically mean that more developments will be subject to EIA. It's important here to bear in mind what Holgate, Mr. Justice Holgate said in Wild Fish Conservation. It's a 2023 case. At paragraph 204, he said that the mere fact that a measure is likely to have a significant effect, in this case, he was looking at the habitats directive, but it equally applies to the EIA directive, is insufficient, he said, to render it a planner project within the ambit of the regulations. And that is, of course, right, because otherwise that would involve approaching the law backwards. First, it has to be a project within the scope of the EIA Directive. So first, you have a project which is within the scope of the EIA Directive. That hasn't changed. Secondly, you then have environmental impact assessment. This is usually contained in the form of an environmental statement, although, side note here, there are provisions within the Leveling Up and Regeneration Act that could change this, not yet, but they are there in the background. That procedure two hasn't changed. What has changed is the content of the environmental statement. In some cases, Estelle and Ruchi will set out in far more articulate terms than I could, what the determinative factors will be for what ought now to be included in those specific cases. I would point out here, the requirement for decision makers, however, including at the local level, to consider the climate impacts of a project under consideration for consent has long been included in the EIA Directive. And then, thirdly, there must be consultation on that, including with the public. That too hasn't changed. And I'm going to pause here to emphasize perhaps that has been brought to the fore as a result of this case. It was contained, it was considered to much more detail in the majority decision compared to the minority decision. Lord Leggett, his judgment for the majority emphasized at paragraph 21 that public participation is necessary to increase the democratic legitimacy of decisions which affect the environment and that public participation requirements serve an important educational function, contributing to public awareness of environmental issues. That follows on from Lord Hoffman's famous statement. I'm going to read it out without apology because I just love it. In Barkley, page 615 of the Law Report there, Lord Hoffman saying, "The directly enforceable right of the citizen which is accorded by the EIA Directive is not merely a right to a fully informed decision on the substantive issue. It must have been adopted on an appropriate basis and that requires the inclusive and democratic, that word again, procedure prescribed by the Directive in which the public, however misguided or wrong-headed its views may be, is given an opportunity to express its opinion on the environmental issues." So we see public participation by the majority highlighted as an essential element of the democratic process, process and educational function, and also necessary as a matter of statute. They also relied on the ARHUS Convention. So it doesn't matter if the public is totally wrong in what they're saying. They are entitled and indeed obliged to have an opportunity to express their view. And then after all of this, the decision is entirely up to the decision maker, provided they take all environmental information into account and give reasons for their decision. That too has not changed. So again, very, very short summary of the EIA procedural implications. In a nutshell, not much has changed. But the substantive has. So I think I turn to Estelle now. If that's right.
That is right. Thank you. It's almost like we know what we're doing. So yeah, thank you very much, Nina. And that's exactly right, that this is an odd decision in that a lot has changed, but nothing has changed in many ways. And it's kind of getting our heads around that, that that's been quite an interesting process. So just to pick up on a couple of things that Nina was talking about and then to add one thing further. It's interesting the way that the court drew on the ARHUS Convention and reminded essentially everybody that the Environmental Impact Assessment regime in part implements the ARHUS obligations. And if you're interested in that, which it is fascinating, there's quite a lot of useful information in the decision for you. Turning to the types of development to which this most obviously applies. Plainly fossil fuel development in general is the key area of development where the majority's decision applies. And there's been some interesting discussion and questions about the why it was that by the time the matter reached the Supreme Court, in fact, early on, there was agreement between the parties as to the inevitability of the emissions that would result from the burning of the oil and that indeed the burning of the oil was the inevitable result of it being extracted from the ground. And if one pauses and thinks about it a bit carefully, it's very plain that for by far the majority of all fossil fuel commercial extraction, we must always remember that this is about commercial extraction, not about exploration. But for commercial extraction, the whole point of fossil fuel development is for the extracted fossil fuel to be burned. There is a tiny area where that might not be the case. And I know there's been some discussion about, for example, plastics. And you might be interested to know that the British Plastics Federation estimates that between four and six percent of all of Europe's oil and gas is used for plastics. So it is an absolutely tiny percentage of oil and gas that's used for something that is non-combustive. And similarly in relation to coal. So one shouldn't be too distracted by the fact that here we were dealing with the obvious inevitable combustion emissions and that that was an agreed fact. That was an agreed fact for a very good reason. It wouldn't have been agreed otherwise. So the question then arises, and we're going to talk about this in some detail in a bit later, about what are the longer term wider implications? But an obvious question arises, to what extent are there other types of development where there is the same sort of inevitable greenhouse gas emission effect downstream by the the use of the particular thing that's being consented? I will leave that for now and just take one other thing that I'd like to talk about, which is this picking up on the dynamic between national and local decision making. Because the majority addressed this, and it's partly at paragraph 28 and partly a bit later on, where Lord Leggett made the point that it was open to the United Kingdom to adopt a decision-making process where the national regime alone addressed these types of decisions. And indeed, as many on the court, on the webinar will be aware, there are some decisions that have been taken out of the local authorities' decision-making processes and have been given to, for example, national infrastructure decision-making processes. But commercial oil production, in fact, a very large array of commercial fossil fuel production has not been so taken away from the local authorities' decision-making processes. And there are very good policy reasons for why local decision-making and the democratic nature of that type of decision-making has been considered to be the correct locus for these types of planning judgments and that the local plan is the correct place for these decisions to be made, obviously with the national policy being, in the usual way, a material consideration. And that's because the the way in which these types of developments interact with the environment has predominantly been locally. So then the question arises, and I'll just take an extra 30 seconds here, if I may, everybody. The way in which climate impact arises is, of course, not just local, it is national and it is global. And what the majority, I think, recognizes is that just because climate impacts are inherently global and national doesn't mean that they are also not local. And for those who are interested in that particular interaction between decision-making, greenhouse gas emissions and the United Kingdom's obligations in terms of its intermediate targets and its long-term net zero target, the Climate Change Committee has a whole report put out with the Six Carbon Budget on local authorities, local authorities' role and the way in which that slots very importantly into the whole 2008 Climate Change Act schema. So with that short analysis, I'll pass over to Ruchi for her thoughts.
Thanks, Estelle. Right. So the thing that I wanted to look at in more detail was this issue of causation and what test applies moving forward. And as Alex already summarized, one of the key findings and really critical finding was that the majority held that the question of this direct and indirect effects was ultimately a question of causation. And Lord Leggett, when you read his judgment, you see that he essentially identified three possible legal tests for determining that causal connection. And in each, in each one, he's basically asking if event X causes event Y. And so then he sets them out. And the first one is the but for test, which legal practitioners, I think, will be familiar with. But it's essentially, you know, would you, would event Y have occurred but for the occurrence of event X? And what he says in the judgment is that this is a relatively low threshold. And again, in the legal world, we're kind of familiar with that one. There's then this, a second possibility, which is the intervening act test. And this asks whether there has been any intervening act and whether that's an ordinary event. And if so, it cannot break the chain of causation. So this is applied in some pollution control legislation. It's also very similar to a test that's applied in insurance law. And it's effectively characterized by Lord Leggett and by practitioners as the sort of middle ground test. And then the final possibility is what's known as the necessary insufficient condition test. And this imposes a much higher threshold. And it is only met if that event X is both a necessary condition of event Y and is also a sufficient condition for the occurrence of event Y. So this, as you can see, is the, it's the strongest possible test of causation because ultimately what you're saying is that every time X happens, then event Y automatically follows. And so that chain of causation is just super strong. So when it came to applying these tests to the facts of Finch, the majority were satisfied that all three legal tests were met, which was, you know, fine for Finch, but ultimately it meant that they kind of docked the question as to which test should apply when interpreting and applying the EIA regime moving forwards. And therefore, to kind of understand how we take this forward and to what extent this might apply to other developments, I think it's actually going to be quite important to ascertain which test applies. And that, and that answer, I mean, you know, I said, say it's really important, but the answer's not actually in the judgment. But if you were to read between the lines, I think what we can safely do is discount that third and final strict causation test. Because I think when you read the paragraphs that come sort of before it and after it, Lord Leggett talks a lot about how it can rarely be satisfied. He then looks at sort of other matters, such as the issue of likelihood in the EIA. And he adopts a much lower threshold for likelihood. And I just think reading it all together doesn't seem like it's going to be the third strict test because basically it can almost, like, it's very difficult to satisfy. So that leaves open the first two options, so the first or the second test. And as I say, it's not really apparent from the judgment. But I guess what we can say is that the test of causation in each context is determined very specifically in the context of the legislation. So I guess we have to think about what the legislation is geared to do. And we know that the EIA Directive is to be construed widely and purposefully. And so at least on one analysis, it could well be argued that you apply the lower threshold, the but for test. And certainly, I mean, if you're a local authority or a developer and you're thinking about like challenge proofing your reasoning on including an effect or not including include or not including an effect in your ES, I mean, that is probably the test you want to apply if you want to avoid a like litigation over this. But in terms of like an actual definitive legal answer, I think we are probably going to need to wait for another legal ruling. And so that's all from me on this point. And I will hand over to Harriet.
Thank you, Ruchi, very much. And just, just to bridge what I'm going to say from what you've said. I agree with so much of what you said, but in addition, I would draw out the fact that Lord Leggett took into account the ease of assessment as well. And that that enabled him to say causation plus possibility or ease of assessment made this firmly within the EIA Directive. Now, I'll get on with what I needed to do. Thank you very much for that, Ruchi. I have a few thoughts to share about the Supreme Court's analysis of two recent judgments. One of the Irish Supreme Court and one of the Oslo District Court. neither of which was available when Finch was considered by the Court of Appeal. Time obviously won't permit a close analysis of their treatment. But I hope you find the following thoughts helpful. So the first case, the Kilkeny Cheese case, decision of the Supreme Court, as I've said, citation two thousand and twenty-two I E S C eight, a case brought by the National Trust for Ireland and TES against the Planning Board in Ireland and Board Play in Ireland. So decision of Ireland's Supreme Court on the EIA directive and on the EIA of a proposal for a major cheese factory, hence Kilkeny Cheese, a decision of the most senior court in Ireland on the interpretation of the EIA directive. Three preliminary things to note. First, the argument in that case was that because the cheese factory would require really a very great deal of milk, the consequential increase in milk production in Ireland had to be assessed. In particular, the greenhouse gas emissions caused by an expansion of the national herd, all those extra cows. The Supreme Court of Ireland said the increase in overall demand for milk might well in turn stimulate an increase in milk production with implications for the size of the national herd and therefore greenhouse gas emissions. But no, they did not need to be assessed within the EIA. And, this is my third point, they endorsed the approach taken by Mr. Justice Holgate at first instance in Finch, which was the latest judgment then available to them in the Finch case. Subject to one caveat, which I'm going to read out. Subject to this, there may well be special and unusual cases, they said, when the causal connection between certain off-site activities and the operation and construction of the project itself is demonstrably strong and unbreakable. And you'll recall from what's been said already, the approach that Holgate took. So what did the majority judgment say about Kilkeny Cheese? For that, you need to read paragraphs one six three to one six eight. Lord Leggett quotes the caveat entered by the Irish Supreme Court and holds that the combustion emissions in Finch fall fair and square within that caveat. In other words, the causal connection between those activities and the project is strong and unbreakable. But the key point to note is at paragraph one six seven of Lord Leggett's judgment. Respectfully disagreeing with the Irish Supreme Court's view of Holgate's judgment, essentially disagreeing that there was the either or choice of approach that Mr. Justice Holgate had indicated, wide open on the one hand and connected to the project and its operation on the other. The majority in Finch endorsed paragraph one one zero, one hundred and ten of the Kilkeny Cheese case, which they find illustrates clearly the differences between the cases, Finch and Kilkeny Cheese, and why a different result is reached in Finch. There, the Irish Supreme Court described the affected issue as, and I quote, entirely elusive, contingent and speculative. Its very elusiveness, said the Irish Supreme Court, means that it is incapable of measurement or assessment, touching on the point I made just now about the decision of the majority in Finch, and hence cannot be the sort of significant indirect effect which Article three of the EIA directive must be taken necessarily to contemplate. So that is the reason that Lord Leggett did not reach the same decision as the Supreme Court in Kilkeny Cheese. What did the minority judgment say? For that, please read paragraphs three oh five to three one two, and it's measured, it's mentioned also at two nine eight. And the references Lord Sales draws attention to in Kilkeny Cheese. One of them I am going to read out at paragraph three one oh of Lord Sales judgment. He draws attention to paragraph one oh six of the Kilkeny Cheese judgment, where the Irish Supreme Court said this. All of these provisions, referring to the EIA directive, of course, all of these provisions strongly suggest that the information to be supplied must be firmly tethered to the project itself so that the indirect significant effects to be assessed must be intrinsic to the construction and operation of the project. I failed to persuade the majority in the Supreme Court that these emissions were not intrinsic to the construction and operation of the project. It will be interesting to see, though, whether this passage is used to resist too expansive an interpretation of the effects of the majority decision in Finch. And on that note, I move on to my second case, conscious that I may well be close to overrunning. Greenpeace Nordic, and this needs very little to speak about, but it is a very important decision. It's a first instance decision of the Oslo District Court in January two thousand and twenty-four. So well after argument to the Supreme Court, but it was drawn to their attention by the appellate. It's one to watch as it is under appeal to the Norwegian Supreme Court. And like Finch and unlike Kilkeny Cheese, concerns the question whether scope three emissions of fossil fuel development had to be assessed under the EIA directive. For the time being, you may be very interested, you may be interested in a very different treatment. The decision in this case was given by the two judgments. The parties were not asked to make submissions. So this comes, as it were, direct from the Supreme Court's reading of the judgment in the case. Have a look at the majority at paragraphs one six nine to one seven three, which say amongst other things that the reasoning, I'll read it out, as a judgment of a foreign court, although on the very question and issue before us, this decision only has authority insofar as its reasoning is persuasive. I do find the reasoning of the Oslo Court persuasive and agree with it. It entirely accords with what I consider to be the proper interpretation of the EIA directive, says Lord Leggett, the majority in Finch. What do the minorities say? Go to paragraphs three one four to three one five with the various reasons it did not find that court's judgment persuasive. As I have said, though, watch out for it's the decision of the Norwegian Supreme Court, which will address what appears to be a very, very similar question to that answered by our own Supreme Court in Finch. Will they find the reasoning of the majority decision of our Supreme Court persuasive? We will see. And with that.
Super, thank you so much, Harriet. So we're going to move on now to the longer term wider implications. And I'm going to kick off on that with Nina, please.
Thanks, Estelle. I'll be really quick on this, which is to answer, to do it efficiently. There's a question already in the Q and A on this, so anonymous attendee, thank you for anticipating what I was going to say. If you are concerned about a decision that is already made, I can give you some peace of mind because the Supreme Court's decision does not act retrospectively. So if that decision is in the bag, that's in the bag. So it won't affect decisions made after, sorry, before, before the twentieth of June. That comes with a caveat because there are some cases currently working their way through the courts that are making the same argument. And I should think litigants will be using this case in to support their arguments, notwithstanding it coming after the decision in that case. So there will be some blurring of the boundaries. But as a matter of strict law, it doesn't affect decisions that have already been made. The law doesn't act retrospectively. I've also been asked outside of this panel if there are any implications for the habitats directive because those conservation law geeks know that there's been some read across between the HABs and the EIA directives. And here I can give a clear answer, no, in my opinion, because Article six three of the habitats directive requires assessment of the effects of any plan or project on, likely to have a significant effect on the site. So it's always been locationally specific. So I don't see that being impacted by this. That said, if you do think you've got a case where that is an issue, bring it to me, please. So that in a nutshell is what I have to say on that.
Super, thanks so much. And I'll turn over to Ruchi, I think we'll be also dealing with some of the questions that have come up in Q and A.
Yes, yes. So I was going to look at sort of potential implications for other developments and sort of if this overlaps with what we're getting in terms of questions. So first thing to flag here is that there is a lot of chat about the terminology of, you know, scope three or downstream emissions and this being entirely new territory and completely alien to planners. But just want to flag that that's not the case. And to push into context, downstream emissions are in fact already assessed and taken into account in a number of infrastructure or planning projects. And so where you've got large road infrastructure, emissions are routinely assessed, not just at the operation stage, but also those arising from the increased or new cars on the road. With airport expansion, again, increased emissions from the additional flights are regularly assessed. And there is sometimes pushback in terms of whether the greenhouse gas emissions from incoming flights need to be accounted for as well as outgoing flights. But ultimately, you know, these emissions are being assessed. And to the extent that there is that bit of pushback, that might well need to be revisited in light of the judgment and applying the sort of the tests that we have in the majority judgment. And then finally, I can like never get away from squire or chicken manure. So that's like a classic example of downstream emissions, although that wasn't about greenhouse gas emissions. And we've talked about harmful impacts, but of course downstream effects can also be positive impacts. So a great example of that is renewable energy projects, which would involve reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. And again, this is routinely assessed. But in fact, in light of what Lord Leggett says about such energy projects in his judgment, I think arguably we will be seeing much more emphasis on the downstream benefits. And I think developers who are promoting those schemes can benefit quite significantly from the judgments. That's, that's great. And I think two points on sort of developments moving forward. One is that I think basically kind of what Harriet said, you'll need to consider two factors. So one, you apply the causation test and then two, ask whether there's sufficient evidence on which to base an assessment, i.e. you know, is there a proper methodology that can be used? And one on which you can have a reasoned conclusion. Because if your answer is yes on both points, then you should be looking to include those impacts, whether positive or negative. And then just the second final point is that I think what hasn't been resolved is how you then factor that into the assessment. Because obviously EIA is procedural. And that's why I knew we've had some questions about, well, it was sort of discounted in certain airport expansion schemes. And I think that's, that's a tension that will, will still exist. And Finch is not necessarily an answer to that outcome, you know, the outcome in a given case.
Thanks very much. Harriet, do you have a couple of minutes now, if there's anything you want to add?
Thank you so much. Yes, and on questions such as what developers need to do. Well, first of all, don't panic, which I think is the message from all of us on this call. Finch does not say that all scope three emissions for all development upstream and downstream must be captured. It does not say that every additional emission is significant either. It expresses no view on this, but holds firm to the existing position that significance is for the planning authority. So what should developers do? Well, upskill. Picking up on what Ruchi has said about questions that say we don't use the greenhouse gas protocol, the terminology is new to us. Ensure you make use of skills, train yourself, make use of the available data, the terminology, and indeed actual reporting of greenhouse gas emissions to provide the best assessment you can of any additional emissions that are within scope. As far as what is the greenhouse gas protocol, it's a very well-known document, series of documents that, for those that are involved in reporting greenhouse gas emissions, published by the Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative, which is an international initiative involving a whole range of parties, intended to ensure that reporting takes place on a standardized basis. So a good source of information.
Super, thanks, Harriet. Oh, sorry.
I'm overrunning again. I'll hand over. Thank you, Estelle. Thanks for keeping me.
Oh, that's brilliant. Thank you so much, Harriet. So we're, in order that we've got enough time for questions, and there's some interesting ones in the Q and A, we're just each going to give a little minute's worth of our short main takeaway point, and I'm going to kick off with Ruchi.
Okay, I wanted to flag, but it is very interesting. And the question of argubility is what I think we all need to reassess as practitioners as the threshold in judicial review hearings. This was a case which was deemed unarguable both on the papers and at the oral renewal hearing. And Sarah Finch had to go to the Court of Appeal to get permission and then go back to the High Court. And think about how much expense and time is wasted on disputing argubility. I'm not saying that that should be conceded in every case, but certainly something for defendants to think about.
Really, thank you. My takeaway point is really the point on which the court was unanimous and in which the Court of Appeal was unanimous in the opposite direction. Namely, that what is or is not an effect of development is not itself a question of evaluative judgment, while questions of significance and likelihood remain as matters of judgment for the decision maker. Next one.
Excellent. Harriet, my point, less a takeaway, more of a tentative prediction. We'll have to see, of course. Don't be surprised if planning court judges read Finch relatively narrowly rather than broadly and begin to distinguish it. Now, I say that for three reasons. One, there is room for interpretation in the majority judgment that are, as other panelists have discussed, including Ruchi in relation to causation, loose ends to tie off. In particular, do the findings in Finch only really concern oil? If so, do they only really concern oil where it is inevitable that the oil will be burned? And as Estelle mentioned, there are some cases where it isn't inevitable. Or does it have a broader application? And if so, what is that? All of those issues will need grappling with by the planning court in future cases. Secondly, we have the dissent. It wasn't a unanimous decision. That will, I'm sure, give some judges pause to thought. And thirdly, it's notable that in this case, the judges with significant planning experience have taken a more restrictive rather than a less restrictive view of how broadly the EIA regulation should be read. So I'm not just talking about Mr. Justice Holgate at first instance, but also, as Ruchi mentioned, the two judges who refuse permission to seek review. I'm not suggesting there's a single planning judge approach or a single planning judge way of looking at this. But it might be an indicator that for some planning judges, that the implications of a broader reading of Finch at least are quite difficult to grapple with. That could come into play when they begin to interpret it and apply it in similar cases in future. So it is a tentative prediction. We'll have to see, but that's my takeaway point.
Thanks, Alex. Nina?
I don't, yeah, we're going into Q and A and the questions are great and there's lots of them. So I'd be very quick. I think I take some heart from this case in that, while it's incredibly complicated, what the court actually did was very simple. They looked into the legal toolbox to answer a question that became incredibly complex before them. And they used the legal tools at their disposal. So I think it's highly encouraging that the courts are able to grapple with issues that are only going to be more and more complicated as a result of the climate crisis and the world we're living in now. So I'm heartened by that.
Yeah, absolutely. So and it is a reminder that there is a limit to the way in which planning judgment interacts with public law decision making. My takeaway is my favorite paragraph at the end of paragraph twenty-one. You can only care about what you know about. And it reminds us really what the whole purpose of the EIA regime was. And just to pick up on a couple of the Q and A questions about mitigation and the fact that it's very clear that for end use emissions or for downstream emissions, certainly in the climate space, there really isn't anything that you can do to mitigate those emissions. But the majority addressed that. And if you look at paragraphs one oh four to one oh five of the decision, Lord Leggett makes the point that EIA may be useful for identifying mitigation measures. And they may be a valuable result of the EIA process. But that the identification of mitigation measures is not the sole or indeed even the main purpose of conducting environmental impact assessment. And I think one of the things that the majority judgment really does for us is it refocuses us and reminds us about what is the point of anybody bothering to undertake an environmental impact assessment in the first place? And that there may well be certain types of environmental impact that are unmitigatable. But that if you are a decision maker and you are going to make a decision where the outcome of that is going to be that effect, you need to be able to understand that and to have the extent of that information before you so that you can take that properly into account. I'm going to very quickly, if I may, also answer one of the other questions, which was what was the OEP's intervention all about? If you have a look at paragraph fifty of the judgment, the OEP's intervention is mentioned. The OEP intervened because it was concerned that decisions of the lower courts could have an adverse impact on sound environmental decision making and hence on environmental protection and the improvement of the natural environment. And so they asked for a principled approach to be taken to the meaning of the term indirect effect. And they suggested some legal principles of analysis which could help with that. So in our remaining eight minutes, I'm going to start off with what I think is with what I think is one of the most interesting questions, which I'm going to throw open to the panel. Which is the one from Paul Ward, which is the majority says something quite interesting about the extent to which other regulatory regimes are or aren't relevant. To what extent does the panel think that that i- is a big change, is going to shift matters? What do you think? Over to any one of you who wants to answer that.
I'll kick off. It, it doesn't, the position's not changed. So where, I'm thinking Preston, the case about the, the outfall into a salmon river. And even though the outfall was regulated by the environmental permitting regulations, it was still a mandatory consideration under the habitats regulations assessment in that case for the decision maker. Because it's still a material, sorry. And what's required is a material consideration for the decision maker is still required, even if there is another regulatory regime that will control it. So you, policy, we know, it says be mindful and expect and assume that the other regulatory regime will work as it's intended to, that's quite right. But if it is a mandatory legal consideration, that does, because there is an additional regulatory regime that operates to control that, doesn't mean you ignore it. So still take it into account, but be mindful of the other regime that's out there and assume it will operate as intended.
Yeah, absolutely. So and there's quite a lot of case law also in that regard, that it is just a planning assumption. And if there's direct evidence that that assumption doesn't hold, then, then that's relevant and you don't rely on the regulatory regime. There are a number of questions in the chat about upstream impacts and upstream emissions. What do they mean? To what extent are inevitable upstream emissions now also going to be something that have to be taken into account under the EIA process? Harriet, do you want, do you want to say something about that?
Well, yes, very much so. Thank you. So that was the Kilkeny cheese case. That was obviously an upstream impact. The, the increase in milk production that was required to supply the development was said to be necessary to be assessed.
And, and. What, Harriet, just if I may interrupt, what, what would be, what about if you've got like a concrete factory, for example? What about the upstream emissions that come from, you know, getting all the terrible stuff that comes out of the ground? Good stuff that comes out of the ground and goes into making concrete?
Yes, nice, nice point and nice distinction. I'm concerned about concrete. Concrete is one of those areas because it's, is it something like four to six percent of global emissions come from concrete? It is a massive, massive carbon emitter and therefore something to look at very carefully in terms of upstream emissions. I can't go further than that with my knowledge of the industry and, and, and the current state of, of commentary on this case. But definitely one to look at. So just coming back to my thoughts about the Kilkeny cheese case. With upstream emissions, I think more than downstream. Quantification and assessment of those in, those, those emissions may well depend on assumptions that aren't as rock solid as were possible in the Finch case. So that may be one to watch as well. Thanks, Estelle.
Rupert, thanks very much. Just while Ruchi and Alex decide if there's any particularly burning, interesting questions they want to answer, and Nina as well. There's been a couple of questions asked about AHUS costs protection in this case. Just remembering that what the Supreme Court said about the AHUS convention and the principles drawn from it weren't really about costs, although they did, that there was a sort of overall reference to the fact that it's important for there to be public participation in the decision making process, including at the court stage. But the, the AHUS cost regime did indeed assist the appellant in this case. There wasn't much dispute actually about either the extent of the cap or the application of the cap. And so this was one of the cases, it used to be one of the many, now maybe one of the few. Where, where AHUS was not a point that was of particular concern or dispute between the parties. Nina, Ruchi, Alex, anything you want to answer? Otherwise, I'm going to direct a question towards you.
I've got one that is directed to me, so I'll let Alex go and then I'll quickly answer that one.
That's fine. Nothing in particular from me. I've had a quick scan through, but nothing I feel particularly equipped to answer now. So if you want to throw a question to us, then by all means do, play the wild card.
Super. All right. Well, Ruchi and Alex, how about you think about this question while Nina answers? How much weight should local authorities give to compliance with net zero and climate targets versus local environmental and social impacts? Nina, what would you like to answer?
Kind of leads into that, actually. So I've been asked to confirm the, that whether the need for an EIA which considers scope three emissions impacts that this new requirement following Finch impacts the LPA or Mineral or Mineral Planning Authority or Secretary, the, the decision makers and authority to approve a project under the planning regime. And so is it really a change in process as opposed to a shift in whether approvals will be granted? The court, this is a matter of judgment for the decision maker, whether to approve it or not. It's not only scope three emissions that will feature in that decision, of course. But now that is going to feature in the decision, whereas previously it did not. And there's a paragraph, so it's up to the decision maker in each case how that features. And it's not for the courts to say whether it should or should not decide a certain way unless there's a law that says so. So one thing that Lord Leggett, giving judgment for the majority, did say, he did touch on this. And said that guaranteeing rights, this is paragraph twenty one, everyone's favorite paragraph. Guaranteeing rights of public participation in decision making and promoting education of the public in environmental matters does not guarantee that greater priority will be given to protecting the environment. But the assumption is that it is likely to have that result, or at least that it is a prerequisite. So it, it has a role, but it's not for the courts to say what the result should be in the EIA decision making process. Because it is procedural, not outcome based. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, absolutely. And just before I hand over to Ruchi, just to mention that there's a couple of questions in the chat about what's the impact for other minerals. Have a look at Lord Leggett's judgment, paragraph one hundred and twenty. He explicitly addresses the concern that was articulated in the High Court about the potential knock on effects for other mineral extraction. And says essentially, don't worry.
Estelle, can I, and I've said a few words off the back of what Nina said. I, I think what we're touching on in that question is the concern that Lord Sales raised. Both the majority and the minority, concerned for obvious reasons about consistency in decision making, whilst obviously respecting the, the role of the decision maker and the exercise of judgment. But that question, how much weight should be attached, if it remains a question for the decision maker, does arguably give rise to difficulties. Because if each decision maker is considering the same basic thing, namely the contribution of downstream greenhouse gas emissions to the global climate issue, one would expect a consistent approach. And then you could see that there are problems if there isn't a consistent approach. And I think what, what this judgment does is leave that to the decision maker in a way that will possibly generate those inconsistencies in future.
Estelle, you've done the mute thing, maybe.
No, I was just, sorry, I didn't actually mean everybody here.
Okay, I'll come in on the question that you directed about what weight local authorities, whether, how much weight should local authorities give to compliance with nets zero and climate targets versus local environmental and social impacts? And so two initial thoughts, which is one, obviously weight is a matter for, for local authorities quintessentially, and this judgment doesn't change that. Second, the question rather supposes that there is always going to be a conflict between your, the national targets and net zero obligations and what you want to achieve locally. And actually, I found that that's not often the case. And actually, to the contrary, I've often worked with local planning authorities where their local policies are more ambitious than necessarily what's mandated at a national level. So that's certainly something worth thinking about because, you know, like just a really good example would be sort of the new policies that we're seeing around retrofishing and whole life carbon assessments. In that kind of case, absolutely, you're going to have alignment. So you, you know, give it whatever weight you want ultimately, but you'll do it recognizing that it complies not just with your local environmental objectives, but also really contributes to net zero at a national level. And then to the extent that there's some, there might sometimes be conflicts, if you're looking at, you know, the environmental benefits versus the climate harm, for example. That is quintessential planning exercise that I think local planning authorities have been doing, you know, for years. And so that, that's not impacted by Finch.
I'm going to just wrap up, but I'll take one minute as we did start a tiny bit late to answer in a very rapid way a few of the other questions. Yes, there is an impact on ongoing judicial reviews, the Cumbria Coal Mine Judicial Review, the Biscathor judicial review. And maybe a couple of others that were previously stayed behind this. And submissions are being made on the impact of Finch on those cases as, essentially as we speak. And in terms of the question about the practicality of what's happening. The two things to say, first of all, to the extent that there are clear upstream and downstream emissions that are inevitably going to result from particular development. And there is a well-recognized methodology which makes it sensible for those to be assessed in the usual way with EIA. Because of course, we recognize that there's a certain amount of give and take, a certain amount of forecasting in what is assessed. So it's not a council of perfection, it's just in the usual way to the extent that's possible to assess. And there is a useful methodology, then they should be assessed. And I can't help answering this last question, which is do I agree that minority went wrong when effectively saying assessment of scope three emissions was pointless? Is that, if that was right, what would be the point of assessing scope one emissions? And indeed, my, my question would be broader than that. If that were right, what would be the point of assessing quite a lot under environmental impact assessment that we regularly accept is sensible for local authorities to take into account and obliged to be assessed? So I certainly think that the majority went a bit wrong there. Looking at the time, we're just a few minutes over. Unless there's anything else burning anybody would like to say? I'm going to thank or over Harriet.
Yeah, I'd love just a shout out, Squire has come out. That was your case as well, Estelle. So a quick congratulations from your opponent in this case for achieving that result after five years, nearly five.
Well, and you know, congratulations to everybody who was in the case. It was, it was a very interesting one to be involved in and we were all delighted to be involved. So I want to thank you all very much for your attendance on this sunny afternoon. I, I hope that we've illuminated some of the debates. I hope that we've engaged you. And we look forward to continuing this conversation over the months to come. Have a look, as I said, you're going to get the recording of this webinar either today or tomorrow. And then there'll be more materials coming out via Cornerstone Climate as we have longer to think about and ruminate on the judgment and we give a little bit more of an in-depth analysis. But thank you all very much and we look forward to seeing you at our next event. Take care and have a lovely day. Bye bye.